We'll begin today with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the June 24, 2024 meeting. This is the Shawnee County Board of Health. We are joined today. My name is Kevin Cook. I serve as the Chair of the Board of Health. Joining me today is Commissioner Rippon. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Mays is not able to be with us this morning. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Teresa, for us to get us started off with the Board of Health.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. So just as a reminder, the Board of Health through state statute is also the Board of County Commissioners. And so just as a reminder for everybody that that's how that works. So today, again, welcome to today's Board of Health meeting. This is an opportunity that we like to showcase not only the work going on at the Health Department, but we also use this as an opportunity to showcase work going on with our community partners, some of which you'll hear from today. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview of where we're headed for today's meeting. You will be hearing from Adia Vaughn. Adia serves as our Health Promotion Specialist, and she's going to be providing an overview, an update on the Tobacco Sensation Program that we have at Highland Park High School that we've been a part of. You're going to be hearing from Craig Barnes and Carla Headquist. They're going to be providing an overview of the recent Community Health Needs Assessment prioritization. And then last but certainly not least, you'll hear from our Shawnee County Health Officer, Dr. Erin Locke, and she will be providing an overview of the 2024 county health rankings and taking a little bit deeper dive into the changes that were made this year. Before we get into the agenda, though, I want to take just a few minutes to recognize our most recent Public Health Champion Award recipients. These, both the individual and the organization, were recognized at our most recent community conversation held last month. But just as a reminder to everybody that the Health Department recognizes one individual and one organization that has made outstanding contributions to our community by championing and leading equitable opportunities for health across the Topeka and Shawnee County community. The award recipients were selected based on demonstrated achievements toward improving the underlying social and economic conditions that support health, as well as demonstrating leadership, promoting collaboration, innovation, and fostering opportunities for health. So Marge Ahrens was our Individual Public Health Champion Award. Unfortunately, Marge could not join us today, but I still want to say a few words about Marge, and I'll read just a portion of what was shared during the community conversation. "When the Dillons in Central Topeka closed, it negatively affected several Central Topeka communities, causing a large portion to become a food desert. With the help of community members and several community organizations, the Central Topeka Oasis Group was born to combat food insecurity in Central Topeka with the goal of bringing back a grocery store to a much-needed part of the city." Marge was instrumental in that. She also serves as a city-appointed member of the Shawnee County Farm and Food Advisory Council. Through that, she has seen firsthand the impact of what it means to be in a food desert and what it does to the community, and she's passionate about bringing change through advocacy, policy, and system change. So we enjoyed celebrating Marge and giving her her award during that community conversation. Our organizational Public Health Champion Award is the Chi Delta Zeta Chapter of Lawrence and Topeka. And today, we do have a representative. We have the new president, Tiffany Chris, who's joining us today. So again, I want to share a portion of their nomination and award information. So they participate in community service projects through partnerships with local organizations, including the Ronald McDonald House, YWCA Center for Safety and Empowerment, and the Early College Prep at Loman Hill Elementary. They have prioritized community events that celebrate whole health initiatives for the entire community while simultaneously providing a platform that addresses the health inequalities in the Black and African-American community. Some examples of Chi Delta Zeta's investment in our community here in Shawnee County include collaborative partnerships with the Topeka Chapter of the Links Incorporated, the Black Family Expo, Topeka Juneteenth for the Culture Kansas, and the Suicide Prevention Coalition, the Teen Suicide Prevention. The Zeta Phi Beta Incorporated Chi Delta Zeta Chapter is also building upon the successes that they've seen in the Douglas County community. Those include the Black Maternal Health and Doulas of Douglas County and Community Legal Forum. They're working to expand this work here in the Shawnee County community. So again, thank you, Tiffany, for joining us. And again, we enjoyed being able to celebrate the individual and organization of that community conversation and recognize the work that they're doing here in our community. And with that, we'll move on to our first agenda item, and at first is Adia Vaughn.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Adia Vaughn. I am the Health Promotion Specialist at Shawnee County Health Department, and today I'm going to be talking about our Tobacco Sensation Program successes at Highland Park High School. So to start off, the relationship with Highland Park started out of building trust. It did not happen overnight. It's been about two and a half years' worth of work building this. So it started when our Health Promotions Team was collaborating with building administrators, trying to get inside the schools and pretty much help them accomplish what they need to accomplish. They were a little bit hesitant because at Highland Park, they have an issue with people coming in, doing a little bit of good, taking pictures, and then leaving. So obviously, they were hesitant to work with us. But we are part of their community council, and so just by us being there and building administrators seeing us, they were then more willing to work with us. And it was at their back-to-school event where we had a conversation with building administrations about vaping. And we said, well, we can help with that, and that's how we got in. So in the schools, we do the Not on Tobacco program, which is through the American Lung Association, and Shawnee County Health Department is the first health department in the state of Kansas to do not. So that's a really big deal, and they were really willing to work with us once they found that out. So it is geared towards youth and students. It's about a 10-week program. You can do it in eight weeks. Just depends on schedules. And you meet for an hour a week, but with Highland Park and with schools and schedules and just kids doing different things, we had to modify that just a little bit. So we met about for four sessions for about 30 minutes because we felt that would be the most productive because we know students. After about a certain time, they stop paying attention. So that's what we had to do. We did the program with student council and with the Link Crew. And the reason why we did that, they are student leaders at school. And we recognize that students are more willing to listen to their peers instead of us because they think we're adults and we don't know what's going on in their lives. True, but also not true. So that is why we decided, hey, if we do this with student leaders, they are more willing to listen to them. So my favorite part of doing the NOT program, we got to partner with Bethel College with our Chronic Disease Risk and Reduction Grant, and we got to have the Kaufman Museum at Bethel College at the State Capitol. And with that, we had 12 students go to the Capitol across two days, and they got to learn about how the tobacco industry targets the youth. Because even though we say it, they don't believe it. So they got to see graphs about tobacco usage and cancer. They got to see commercials, advertisements. They got to learn about how nicotine dependence work. They got to learn about a whole bunch of things that, even though we talked about it in our sessions, seeing it in another light and in a bigger picture blew their minds. So why does all this matter? It matters because we are teaching them life skills. We're teaching them advocacy, conflict resolutions, how to cope in a healthy way. They're learning critical thinking. Just by going to that museum exhibit, they're able to put all the pieces of the puzzle together. And even though they think about what we talk about in class and the activities and the videos that we watch are lame and not really helpful, when we ask, what's one thing that you have learned? They are almost always able to say something that we talk about. And they also get to learn about exercising. They get to learn about mental health. They really get to learn about themselves. There's a reflection piece at the end of every session, and they get to see, okay, I know vaping's bad, but this is why it's bad. And now they're able to bring that to their friends, and they're able to explain it in a way that I can't explain it, but in a way that helps them. So what is the best way to keep the work going? Showing up and being transparent. Again, this did not happen overnight. We showed up to community events. We showed up to job fairs, resource fairs, health fairs, whatever Highland Park had going on. We were there if we felt that it was beneficial for that. And so because we showed up, they were able to trust us, and we were transparent in our approach. We spoke from the heart. We said, we want to help you. We recognize that you cannot do it all by yourself. So us showing up, being transparent, we are able to continue the momentum. And I encourage everyone in the room, in your communities, continue the momentum. Ask what's going on. Go in and help. Speak from the heart. And that is it. Any questions?
No.
What year did you start working with Highland Park?
2022. It was a bunch of emails back and forth. But in 2023, at their back-to-school event, that is when we were able first to pretty much get in and talk with them. And in 2024 spring semester, that was when we were able to start doing the program. And one thing I forgot to mention, we're also doing this in the Seaman Schools District. And we did have one person complete the NOT program, and they are now tobacco-free.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Carla Headquist. I'm Director of Community Health Engagement at Stormont Vale Health. And Craig Barnes and I today will be giving you the results of our Community Health Needs Assessment survey. So in past iterations of the survey, it's really been the Health Department and the hospital that takes the lead on the survey portion. And then the Live Well or formerly Heartland Healthy Neighborhoods and United Way are really the boots on the ground that work with the work groups and do the strategies and interventions to meet the needs. Stormont needs to do it as a nonprofit hospital. We need to do it every three years. It's an IRS requirement. The Health Department needs to do it every five years as part of accreditation requirements. And I'm excited because of CCBHC status, both Valeo and Family Service and Guidance now have to do Community Health Needs Assessment. So they were at our leadership table this year, helping us plan and complete it. University of Kansas St. Francis Campus was also at the table this year, helping us, as was Grace Med. They're required to do a needs assessment as an FQHC, but they're only required to do it in Wichita. So we were pleased to have them. And so I think that doubling the size of our leadership team really helped with the implementation of the survey. The survey had really four steps, and so the first is the Perception Survey. And people had the opportunity to take that Survey Monkey. We had hard copies. We had it translated into Spanish, all kinds of opportunities to distribute paper, as well as, you probably all got emails, to take the survey online. And that is just the questions about not only access to care, but then the social determinants of health, how people are. And this is their perception for their family and their household. We also do roundtables because we know that not everyone will take the survey and not everybody thinks it's for them or that their voice will be heard. And so we were very targeted with the underrepresented groups that we wanted to make sure that their voice was heard. And so we did roundtables with those groups as well. Of course, you've got the perception, but you also need the data. And so the county health rankings are a very important piece of that. So when you combine the survey, the roundtable, and the data, then we have the Town Hall or the Community Conversation, which is where we asked primarily social service leaders in the room to help us prioritize all of those things. So I am really excited. We had 3,816 survey responses this year. 2,536 was three years ago. And we completely, I think, being in person, helped that a lot three years ago with COVID. Even though that was primarily virtual, it was still more than the iteration before that. And so we just keep getting better. What's more important, I think, than numbers, is the demographics. Like, do the survey respondents really represent the community? And they did. And we worked so hard. We met every week saying, who do you know in Auburn? Who do you know in Rossville? How do we reach this community? And trying to make sure that we were demographically representative of the community. There were two areas that we missed the mark by a bit. Everything else, you could see how well we did. Turns out that more females take surveys than males. And so we had 74% of our respondents were female, where 51% of Shawnee County is female. We still had 203 more responses from males this time than last time. Age was fairly representative. We had a few more over 65 and, of course, less under 18. Very excited about the Black and African-American community response to the survey. 9.61% of our survey respondents versus 8.5% of Shawnee County. And that's double the responses we had from the last survey. 5.9% American Indian or Alaska Native versus 1.4 in Shawnee County. 1.88 Asian versus 1.5 Shawnee County. 71% Caucasian white versus 72% in Shawnee County. Where we could do better is the Hispanic, Latino, Spanish-speaking community. 9.54% represented in the survey versus 13% represented in Shawnee County. We still had 181 more responses from the time before, but we've already got some ideas about some areas that we could build some better relationships there. Middle Eastern was a new category. Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, very representative. Income was on the bell curve, right around the median income. And then we had increased represented in all zips. So we're really pleased with the survey response. One thing I will say about the survey response is that I recently went to a conference and did some secret shopping with the companies that you can contract with to come in and do your Community Health Needs Assessment for you. I was like, well, can you tell me in maybe 150,000 county, what would be your survey response? And the first company said 400. The second company said 1,000. And I said, so 1,000 survey responses, would it be demographically representative? And they said, oh, no, that's very hard to do. You could do some targeted and try to build some relationships, but that's very hard to represent your community that way. And so I think because of our expanded leadership team, because of our long-working relationships with each other and with the community, we were able to get a really good response on the survey. So what did they say? Mental health, for the third iteration of the survey, top concern, major or moderate concern for the household. Adult obesity was second, neighborhood safety, healthy eating options, safe, affordable, excessive. And what I want you to notice is that really, for the first few, the number of responses is pretty close. And so I feel like people definitely told us what they were most concerned about, and so now our job is to listen. I'll let Craig talk about our roundtables.
So Craig Barnes, Shawnee County Health Department. So I'm going to take the second half of this and just kind of talk a little bit more of a dive into the prioritization and the data that we collected, the qualitative, really, the data that we collected. So as Carla had mentioned earlier on a couple of slides ago, one of the things that's really important for us as a steering committee as we look at the needs assessment is doing these in-person roundtable discussions. And so for this year, we had a few less roundtables and less attendees. But what we did this year was we maximized the groups and the organizations and the demographics, populations that are typically underserved, underrepresented in the Perception Survey, as well as the outlying communities. So we felt like we had a really representative group or list of locations. Couple of things to point out with you all for this iteration of the roundtable, a couple of new ones. So we did add the Health Department to get representation from public health to kind of get an idea of what they are seeing as the needs for the clients that they are serving. So that was the first time that we had really engaged the Health Department. And we had participation from every single kind of frontline staff to leadership to mid-level supervisors from every single building and every single program area. So we had a very representative response for that roundtable. Another new one that we added really, that I was really excited about this year because we continue to hear about the need for childcare in our community. And so this year, we engaged childcare providers. And what we did with the childcare grouping was try to reach out to each iteration and group of licensed providers in our community. So those that are the school drop-off programs, licensed childcare homes, childcare centers, and even the resource and referral agencies. So we had representation from all of those, as well as our licensing agency and staff that we had at the Health Department, as well as an intern that came through and provided feedback as well from what they had seen. And so I thought this year, even though we had three less roundtables than we did in '21, the feedback that we got from these roundtables was really robust and is going to be very helpful for us in what we will quantify in the Needs Assessment Report. Okay, so top priorities that we saw here. What we did with this slide was kind of color codes so you can see some of the similarities between all of the priorities that came through each of these groups. So you'll see substance use, addiction in there, save, affordable housing, transportation, mental health. What you saw similarly from this slide here with the top major and moderate concerns combined there on that slide, you saw a lot of overlap between what we saw in the general Perception Survey as well in these roundtable discussions from each of those. This also helps us understand a little bit better for each of those individual groups and subpopulations that we are working with, what they see as their primary needs. And so especially from us as a Health Department, I know the hospital thinks the same way, it allows us also, when we look at our strategic planning, to look at how can we engage with these organizations and these populations in the areas that they are already identifying, again, as primary needs. So what we did, we had all of that that we gathered from the Needs Assessment, from the Perception Survey as a group. Then the leadership team and the steering committee kind of pull and synthesize all of that. And then we took it all and presented it out a similar fashion as what we are doing today to our community through the Community Town Hall, those stakeholders that are working in this field. From there, we did a two-tiered prioritization exercise. So what you can see from our last Town Hall that we held in May, we had 55 participants from a multitude of sectors who are actually representing 41 different organizations, not-for-profit social service organizations, healthcare organizations that work here in our community. So what we did was we did, like I said, a two-part prioritization exercise. The first one was individual group-led discussions. These were five questions. In reality, it's four questions because the first question is a kind of a yes or no with some conversation. And then that leads to, if it's a yes, you answer question two. If it's a no, you go to question three. So we got a lot, again, really good qualitative feedback through the discussion as what individuals and organizations were seeing as the gaps and barriers for them as an organization being able to address the needs that we identified through the Perception Survey, as well as then even taking it to a step further on what relationships can we build? What resources are available in the community? What resources do we need to provide in the community to actually make positive impacts and make a difference in some of these priority areas? So that was the first part of the exercise. That took about 15 minutes to get through those questions. And then the second part of that was a dot exercise. A simple exercise where what we did was we put all of the top 11 priorities, as well as provided a sheet for other. What we did there was then gave every individual who attended the Town Hall three colored dots. There was a green dot that would provide five points. That was what that organization, that individual's called, the top priority that they were working on. The orange dot provided three points. That was the second priority. And then the pink dot was one point. So each of those organizations and individuals that attended the Town Hall then took those dots and put them on the priorities throughout. So what you see here on this slide, the top four in red, there were all top four as well in the Community Perception Survey. So those were, or sorry, in the top five. Because adult obesity, which was listed as number two on the Perception Survey, you'll see actually here, had zero votes from our community stakeholders. So the stakeholders themselves did not see that as high as a priority as the community did. Now, that in piece could probably be, as we are already inferring some of the kind of data analyzing here, is that maybe in the healthy eating, that maybe people voted that as a higher priority in those, in similar realms. What you will, I think, also that I really want to point out here is the number five on the list there. And that is the other, so substance misuse and addiction. So if you noticed from the top 11 indicators that came out of the qualitative survey from the community as a whole, substance misuse and addiction was not listed there. But our stakeholders elevated that up to the number five area. Some of the conversations that we've already been having with individuals who've taken the survey was just maybe a little bit of confusion. They thought that substance misuse and addiction was all encompassed within mental health. And so when they voted in that area, that it would encompass the same area. So some of the things that we're looking at for additional surveys is possibilities of adding definitions, clearly defining some of these things so that we can clear maybe some of those confusing pieces there. So then, so we've already done, as I said, the qualitative piece, the Perception Survey. We've done some additional qualitative data gathering through the Town Hall, as well as the roundtables, and then also through those prioritizations. So as a steering committee, we've already came upon, these will be our next priority areas for the next chip that will be published in '26. So, well, end of '25 for the years of '26 through '28. Now, these areas look very similar to what they were the last time. So behavioral health, as we talked about, that has been, the last three iterations of the needs assessment, that has been the top priority. We will be doing the mental health, but we will also be grouping in the substance misuse piece into that as a whole. So we, instead of having a standalone substance misuse priority area as we had in the last iteration of the chip, we'll be grouping these two groups together. There will still be individual work groups and coalitions that are working on these priorities in the community. So that work won't be changing, but we're just putting them together as a singular priority within the chip. What we'll be adding this year is neighborhood safety and housing. That has, we got resounding feedback within the qualitative of the Perception Survey, as well as the qualitative piece of the prioritization and the stakeholders, that this is a need. And we know there's a lot of overlap between neighborhood safety and housing and those indicators that lead to health outcomes in our community. So that will be a piece that we'll be adding as a priority area in our chip. And we've already started conversations with content experts and people who can provide appropriate technical expertise in that area to engage with us as part of either the steering committee and/or as a part of Live Well Shawnee County in those action work group teams. The next piece will be our food security, so healthy eating and accessibility. That comes as no surprise for us here in our community, I think for you all as well. So that will be another indicator that will stay there as another priority for our chip. And then the fourth area is, again, health equity. So these are going to be the areas specifically, again, addressing disparities. So for us in our community, that our examples would be our SCI rates that are disproportionately impact certain populations than others in our community, as well as infant mortality. And so we're going to keep diving into that as we do a little bit more of the quantitative data analysis through the rest of the development of the report and see if there are other areas that we may be able to and be interested in pulling together in that health equity priority area as well. So, next steps. So kind of as I've talked about, we're continuing to analyze all of the discussion data that we had from the last Town Hall, as well as that primary, secondary, and tertiary data, the quantitative, the numbers themselves. Carla mentioned the county health rankings, but we'll also be looking at data from Burfus, which is the Behavior Risk Factor Surveillance System, as well as the American Community Survey, as well as a multitude of other surveys that provides data as it relates to health indicators in our community. We'll continue to look at data stratification across all of our priority areas, subpopulations and groups within our community. Already talked about Bullet Three right there. Already talked about bullet three right there. And then the next piece and really the, the heavy load moving from this point, moving forward until publication, is to actually develop the rationale and the CHNA narratives for each of those areas as well as to just provide better context as to why these needs are in our community. Our goal each time that we publish a needs assessment report is first off, that is a report that is beneficial for the community at large to be able to utilize. The goal there is that when an organization within Livewell Shawnee County or a part of the steering committee or even any organization in our community looking at impacting health outcomes can use the needs assessment, whether it's for applying for grant opportunities, funding, anything of that sort, to be able to develop strategic planning objectives and goals within their own organizational structure and having the data behind it to support those requests or those needs or to quantify why an objective is important within that organization. So the goal then will be to publish after we get some approvals and reviews, then either in late September or early October of 24. And then, once we have that published, we will present that needs assessment to the community at our annual action summit in December 24. That is our annual meeting. That's kind of our call to action. Our look at the year review as well as look forward into the next year. It'll be the last year of the current chip. And so we really want to hit 25 with a bang next year, making some positive impacts on the goals and strategies that we have outlined within the chip as we look towards then that chip planning and development that we'll be starting really in earnest to start 25 and really build some really positive goals, objectives and strategies behind each of those priority areas so that we can make another positive changes in our community. That's really it, but one thing I really wanted to do is thank Carla. So Carla was the chair of our steering committee this year. And I think without Carla's leadership on the steering committee, you wouldn't have seen some of the truly positive impacts that we got this year, expanding the steering committee. But then, again, I can't be overstated enough how tremendously exciting it is for us as a steering committee to see nearly 4,000 surveys completed in our community. To our knowledge, it may be one of the best survey responses for any survey completed in Shawnee County. And that's saying a lot. That's showing that the community really prioritizes their health and really wants to provide tangible feedback for us all as organizations to work upon to improve the health of our community. So I, I do want to give a major thanks to Carla for, for her leadership on the steering committee this year. And with that, either Carla or I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you commissioners. Appreciate it very much.
Great, good morning. Dr. Erin Locke, I'm the health officer and it's nice to be back with you talking about our health rankings, which I'm sure you look forward to every year. I've initially presented this presentation at the community conversation and I updated it just slightly. And there, there's a couple tweaks to the slides I'll talk about when I get there. So we will briefly touch on the background of the health rankings. I know you, you both are very familiar with the rankings themselves. There has been a pretty big change in how the information is presented. So we'll, we'll talk about that. We'll, we'll only touch very briefly on considerations when you're looking at the actual data and then we'll dive into the, some of the data. We will not touch on every measure. So as you know, the county health rankings come from the University of Wisconsin, actually. So they are in charge. They have funding and support from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. But all of the work really comes from Wisconsin. They do this for nearly every county in the United States. Locally in Kansas, the Kansas Health Institute is charged with taking this information and educating and helping counties to, to use it, to actually make improvements. But the institute does not actually pick the measures or the data or anything like that. Wyatt Beckman helped me with some of these slides. He very generously met with me to review the data to make sure I understood some of the changes. So I just want to give him a little credit here before we move on. So I know you're, you're very familiar with the health rankings model. So the idea here is that many, many aspects of our lives contribute to our health. And they break that down into areas like health behaviors, for example, your access to healthcare. Do you have a job? What's your education? So we, the, the idea of the model is that all of this actually contributes to your overall health. And at the very bottom of that are the policies and programs that are put in place both locally at the county or city level, at the state, at the, at the national level, that these actually influence our health over time. And so we'll take a look here at the health factors. There are 29 measures in the health factors category that actually contribute to our ranking. When you, when you go in and you're, you're looking into the data, there are a lot more measurements that are given, but only 29 actually contribute to the overall score. And then when we look at our health outcomes, there are five that we look at. And those fall under essentially quality of life or quantity of life. One way to think of this is that the health outcomes are where we are now. What's our, what's our quality of life? What's our quantity of life in Shawnee County right now? And the health factors are those aspects of our lives that we can work on that will move the needle at some point in the future. So we like to see, when looking through this data, we like to see that the health factors are doing a little better than the health outcomes because then we, we sort of infer that in the future, we will be improving in these areas. So just in sum, there are 34 measures that contribute to the, to the ranking. Okay, so what's new for 2024 is that the county health rankings are no longer ranking us. We are not given a score anymore. So this is a pretty big change because we used to be able to look at it, you know, one to 105, where do we fall? And how are we compared to Sedgwick County, for example? They are no longer giving us that score. So what are they doing instead? So to start with, they are taking all of the counties in the United States, or nearly all, I should say. There are a few that we don't get any data for, but nearly all counties are represented here. And they are breaking us up into 10 groups where we are similar to the group in which we land. Now you might think that because there are 10 groups, it's like 10% in each group, top 10, bottom 10, for example. But that's not actually what they're doing. Most of us or our counties are on a bell curve, so the majority of us are in the middle. And then we've got those outlier counties, you're really rich. Let's say Johnson County or Healthy County is going to be at one end. And then we have some counties, for example, like in Mississippi, that are at the very other end. Those, those groupings are small. They don't have very many counties in them. The ones that are in the middle have a lot of counties. And so that's kind of how they have done it and you'll find that we're, we're falling in the middle there. When you are in a group, you have a similar score or a similar outcome. Now, your measures that may have gotten you to that point could be different from one county to the next. But when you look at the counties that share a grouping with you, they more or less have similar health outcomes or, or health factors as you. Okay, any questions about that before we move on? Okay, so this is just really comparing kind of the old to the new. So they are doing all of the data the same way. They're looking at it as they always did, but instead of giving us a score, they throw us in a, in a group. So this is really what it looks like. This is just an example using a random county, Washington County, Kansas. And so over on the right-hand side, you can see the data point that represents our healthiest county in the United States and then clear to the left is the least. And this is Kansas. So you can sort of, right away you can tell that Kansas is relatively healthy in the United States. In fact, our state average is higher than our national average. So you can pick that up just from taking a look here. And most of the counties in Kansas are sort of approximated together and there's a couple outliers that aren't doing quite as well to the left. So that's like kind of how you, you read it. Washington County, for example, is not, not doing quite as well as the state average, but better than national. Another way that you can do this is you could actually compare state by state. So each of these states happens to have a Washington County. So we use that just to demonstrate the, the example here. Right away, you can tell that of the four states, Iowa is doing the best and Missouri is doing the worst when it comes to, to health outcomes. Okay, so just moving on quickly as we talk about the data. And I know that this is something that has been introduced every year, that when we look at the data, we really want to be looking at progress over time, especially when you're starting with something that, that hasn't been going so well and you're making improvements. You want to see that trend over time that it's improving. Alternatively, we have some measures where we've been worsening over time. So you really want to look at that as opposed to just taking a single year and trying to understand the context there. Occasionally, the data sources that the rankings use change. So for example, with the census, the 2020 census, that changed the ability to look year to year. So you might find that you, you can only look back so far in time and before that, the data doesn't make sense to compare. So there will be some blocks of time where you can't actually look back very far. Another, and this is a very important point, we use the most recently available data, but there's always a lag. So for the 2024 rankings, the most recent data in general for most of these measures is 2021. So a lot of the work that has been done with the, the health improvement, like the CHA and the chip, we are not going to necessarily see that here in the rankings because our data is only as old as, or as new as 2021, if that makes sense. And then there are some measures where fortunately the data, the numbers are small enough that you actually need to, to combine several years of data before you can get something, a sample size that actually can tell you something meaningful. So there is at least one measure, I think, where we will be looking at it that way. Okay, so here we are with Shawnee County. So this is for our health outcomes. This is where we are right now, the measures that look at our quality and our quantity of life. And you can see that we are somewhat less than the Kansas state average, but we are still higher than the United States' national average. You can look at this a little bit better perhaps when we look at it on a map. And so, let's see if I've got my mouse here. Of course, we have Shawnee County. We are the equivalent of this fourth grouping here. When we look at our surrounding counties, the majority of them are darker, so they would tend to be healthier. We all, we do appear to be in the same grouping as Sedgwick County, for example. But just to point out, Riley, Douglas, Johnson are darker than us. Now, these are the health factors. So recall that earlier I had said that we, we want the health factors to look better than the health outcomes because this means that we are making the changes now to the areas that impact our health that we can anticipate improvement in the future. And that is what we are seeing here. So although we are still below the Kansas state average, we are closer to the average than we were with the health outcomes. And we, we fall into the same fourth grouping on this chart as well. And again, we are similar to Sedgwick County and some of our contemporaries like our, like Riley County, Douglas, Johnson are a little bit darker than us. So a little bit, they're in healthier groupings. Okay, so we will not go over this line by line. But this is the, just a, an electronic version of what the Kansas Health Institute has provided for us. So they take each of those measures that contribute to the score and they break it down for us and provide us with some data. And so just to point out here, 2024 is the most recent year, of course. And then they compare it to Kansas as well as the United States. And then, as I had mentioned before, sometimes there's going to be these gray blocks and that's because the data changed. So you can't accurately compare 2024, the data for these rankings to the rankings in the past. So that's what I was talking about when I was saying that we like to look at things over time, but sometimes we don't have that available. So with all of these measures, I decided to use the, the chip framework, the Health Improvement Plan framework to try to show you where we are with those measures. So this is the Health Improvement Plan that is currently in place right now that Craig had mentioned. We're in the middle year of three, so next year will be the last year. They're working on the health assessment for the next iteration. So just so you, to try to place it in time, I know we're talking about a lot of CHA and chip and data and so just so you kind of know where we are. Okay, so as Craig had mentioned, with the previous Health Improvement Plan, there were four priority areas, the behavioral health, the access to food, the substance use and the health equity. So if I understand correctly, these are essentially staying, but we're moving substance use up into behavioral health and we will be adding the community safety and housing. But for the most part, these are still the priority areas that matter to the community. And one area that I'm going to add under health equity is obesity. So I did not talk about that in the community conversation, but because of the, the assessment and survey, I thought I'd throw it in here so you can see where we are with that. Okay, so let's go ahead and we'll start with behavioral health. So I should also mention, I'm not pulling absolutely every measure from the priority areas, only, only a handful here. So under behavioral health, we're just going to look at the poor mental health days and the suicide rate. And to put them into context, these fall under health outcomes and what we consider quality of life. So how is our health right now? How's our quality of life right now? And poor mental health days falls there. So as recently as 2021, adults in Shawnee County reported that their mental health was not good on nearly six of the previous 30 days. So another way of sort of thinking about that is looking back a month. Not quite a week out of that month, adults in Shawnee County were experiencing poor mental health days. And that has been trending over time. As you can see, over the last few years, they were reported to be four, four, five, and now almost six. And then when we compare to Kansas and the United States, you can see that our mental health in Shawnee County is worse. I also went to kansashealthmatters.org, which is a really nice data website for Kansas, just to look at the subset of adults who are really experiencing poor mental health. So these are adults who say that in the past month, more than half the time, they have poor mental health. So these are the folks that are really, really not doing well. And as you can see, that subset of adults has increased over the years. So we were, we were hanging out around 13% for a few years and then in 2021, it jumped up to 16%. Now, as we move on to suicides, this is actually classified under health factors and under community safety. And I know that community safety is going to be one of our future areas on the future chip. And so just so you can kind of place it in the context of that. So in Shawnee County, from the years 2017 to 2021, we experienced 23 deaths by suicide for every 100,000 people in our county. And this, this information, we have trended all the way back to 2000. And so you can see how over time, we have been increasing. We actually hit a little peak and started to trend down and then we are, this last data point suggests that we're heading back up again. Okay, so I know that was very high level. Moving on to the next priority area, which is access to food. And this is looking at our overall food insecurity rate, but also our child And this is looking at our overall food insecurity rate, but also our child food insecurity rate. And this is classified under diet and exercise, under the health behaviors within health factors, okay? Okay, so this is one of the trends that I really like to show you because we're doing much better now. We still have almost 10% of our individuals in Shawnee County who do not have a reliable source of food, but that has been improving over time, as recently as 2021. And then when we look at children, this also has been improving, although 14% of children still do not have a reliable source of food. And you know, maybe it's a little counterintuitive, but not having a reliable source of food actually contributes to obesity because the food that is cheap and affordable is not necessarily nutritious and does provide a lot of calories without getting that nutrition. We also know that for children who don't have a source of food, a reliable source of food, who are going to school hungry, that can contribute to poor attention, poor educational attainment, behavioral concerns, which then can impact them, you know, for the rest of their lives because of how important education is. So these are just, just my little commentary about why this is such an important issue. Okay, so substance use, we, our priority area was to decrease drug poisoning deaths. And so this falls under alcohol and drug use. And from 2019 to 2021, for every 100,000 people in the community, there were 26 drug overdose deaths. The majority of these are opiate related. You can see here on the bottom, this is the overall, this is the stat I was quoting here, but then it breaks it down into white versus black. And this is the only breakdown that they will provide. And you can see that it is disproportionate. So although the Kansas Health Matters does not believe that there's a statistical difference, you can see that black individuals are experiencing a much higher rate of drug overdose deaths, 46 out of every, 46 drug overdose deaths per 100,000 black individuals in our community. And the final category here is health equity. So we'll talk about the infant mortality rate, the STI rate, and also obesity. So infant mortality falls under health outcomes, it's under quantity of life. Okay, so here, I did not put the little header on, but this is data from 2015 to 2021. So in these years, the rate of infant mortality was eight deaths for every 1,000 live births. So an infant is a child one year or less. And so in our community, for every 1,000 babies that are born, we are losing eight of them in their first year of life. And this is higher than both Kansas and the United States. And I know we're talking about what seems like small numbers, but I think any one of us in this room would say that even one child death, baby death, is too many. And you can see over time, this has been our rate. We really started to do, I don't know what was happening in those middle years, but we were really starting to make a difference, it seemed. And then we've, we've just gone right back up and into that eight rate. Now, this is under health equity, and I know we talked, touched on this last year, because this is not being experienced equally in Shawnee County. So you all know that I just had my baby, six months old, you know, he's six months old now. Our rate was, is only, or our risk, if you will, is only about five deaths per 1,000 live births because we are white. But if you are a black individual in Shawnee County, your risk is 17 for every 1,000 black babies born. It's almost four times. So this is not being experienced equally in Shawnee County and we are losing a lot more of our black young babies than, than anyone else, okay? So that's why it's under health equity. When we talk about sexually transmitted infections, this also is very high in Shawnee County. So we've been trending up. So this, I took this right from the Kansas Health Institute. I'm blanking here, the graph that they give us. So in 2021, there were 816 new cases of chlamydia for every 100,000 people in Shawnee County. Why chlamydia? Chlamydia is a bacteria, it's the most common bacterial STI in the United States. And so it's sort of used as a barometer, if you will, to show us what people are, if people are infected with sexually transmitted infections. It has been increasing over time in Shawnee County and we are far above the Kansas and United States' numbers here. Chlamydia or STIs in general, they contribute to infertility, to chronic pain, to ectopic pregnancies. Some STIs like HPV, for example, contributes to cancer. So these are not benign diseases, they have a lot of morbidity associated with them and cost a lot of money. And in particular, it's under health equity because these tend to impact young women and particularly women of color. Okay, and so you can see that in Shawnee County, we have been worsening over time. We are the red line and the United States is the gold line and Kansas is the green line. I know we've talked about this before, so this is not, not a surprise. Okay, and finally, the adult obesity, which falls under diet and exercise. And here, in 2021, 39% of adults reported a BMI of 30 or greater. So BMI, Body Mass Index, is based on your height and your weight. 25 and higher is considered overweight, 30 and higher is considered obese. And so we have over a third of adults in our community who report obesity. And that, again, is higher than both Kansas and the United States. Tried to see that over time, it's actually been, it appears to be pretty stable. So this is going back to 2017 to 2021. It looks like we've been around that 38, 37, or 39% for several years and pretty equal experienced between female and male. And I didn't, I was not able to get any further breakdown by race, for example. Now this, I just wanted to take a moment to talk about premature death. I know it's not part of the CHIP, but there's a couple pieces that are linked to the premature death that I think are pertinent based on the community health assessment as well. Okay, so premature death falls under quantity of life, which is a health outcome, so kind of how, where are we now? And when we think about premature death, so what we're doing is we are basically saying that 75 years is the life that we expect you to live. That's the, the life expectancy, that if you lived to 75, you would have lived a full life, you would have contributed to your community and to your families. And if, if you die at 75, we will miss you, but we won't think that we have lost something for our community, if that, if that makes sense. If you've lived beyond 75, that's a bonus for us, like you've given back to us. But any person who dies with less than 75, there's a loss there. You can imagine someone dying in their 50s, for example, say they die at age 50, that is calculated to be 25 years of life where they could have contributed in their job, in their, to their family, to their social circles, their, you know, volunteering organizations, whatever it is. So of course, our infant deaths contribute a significant number of years to that. So if you die at age one, you have 74 years of life that has been lost to the community. Who knows what you could have grown up to do, right? You could have been a commissioner.
Part of our standing policy, we're at an hour. Let's go, continue.
Oh, okay, great, that's great, yeah. So that is, it is just a measure essentially of the overall health of your community. In Shawnee County, and the number doesn't, I know it's not as meaningful, it's 9,800 years of life lost for 100,000 population. So the point is that it is higher in Shawnee County than it is in Kansas or the United States. And although the data analysis on this trends does not suggest that we are trending up, I, I think that just by eyeballing it, that if given a few more years, we may find that we have statistically trended up in this measure. So then, just to look at this, again, from a equity lens, the premature death is not being experienced equally in Shawnee County. So to orient here, the 9,800 is our overall value. And then it breaks down Hispanic, but then we have American Indian, black, and white. And so you can see that actually the premature death for the white community, and interestingly, the Hispanic community as well, is lower than our overall county value. But if you're American Indian, or if you are black, you are experiencing, you are dying young, i- is a, is a way to conclude this. You are experiencing a higher loss of years for your community compared to others in Shawnee County. So you might wonder, why are people dying under the age of 75? So here we have from the top five causes for death under age 75, from the years 2019 to 2021. So these three years, 2019, 2020, 2021, the top five. So we have cancer, heart disease, accidents, COVID, and chronic lower respiratory disease, so think like COPD, for example. What fell off and what was replaced by COVID is that we used to have diabetes as number five. So then COVID slid into four and knocked diabetes off. But I wanted to look at accidents out of these, I wanted to focus a little bit more on the accidents because this tends to impact our younger individuals and in particular impacting our, our young people of color. And so just from another equity lens here, look at this a little closer. Okay, so this is injury. So what is injury? This is homicide, suicide, motor vehicle accidents, and poisoning, so you could think of overdoses in this category. From 2017 to 2021, we experienced 103 deaths for every 100,000 people due to one of these four reasons. And just to point out again, that this is inequitably experienced, we have our American Indian and our black populations experiencing this at a higher rate than our Hispanic, for example, or our white communities. Okay, and when we break that down even further, if we just look at homicide in Shawnee County, you can see that our overall rate is approximately 11 deaths for 100,000 population. You're protected if you are white, that drops to about six. But if you are black in our community, your rate is 52 deaths for every 100,000 population. That's why it's red, it is very statistically different than the rest of the community. And this is homicides. When we look at firearms, and this is homicide and suicide, so now suicide being much more common death actually, our overall rate increases to 20 deaths per 100,000. Again, you are protected, some if you are white, but if you are black, your rate is 59 deaths for every 100,000 black individuals in our community. In our community, as pointed out, approximately eight to nine percent of Shawnee County identifies as black. So my sort of takeaway from looking at the data, because there's just so much more, you can look into these county health rankings. My takeaway is that in, to really move the needle, to really improve our overall health in our community and the rankings themselves, we need to focus it on that equitable lens. And so it, as you could see, you're not going to make a lot of impact if you're focusing on communities that already have resources or, or don't really have a very high rate. So if you're just reaching individuals who are white, for example. But if you can reach those communities that are really impacted, in particular, I know I focused a lot on our black community, then the, the impacts that you make are really going to make dramatic strides in the improvement of our overall health and we will see that in the future on these health rankings. And so I, I'm very pleased that we have health equity as a, as a priority area. And I think even then, the other priority areas need to, we need to keep that same lens in all of them. So that was really my takeaway from the rankings. I know that a lot of data has been thrown at you. Is there any questions or anything about them?
Questions, Commissioner Reform?
Have you noticed an uptick on just kind of like unexplained deaths where people, younger people? Seems like I've, I've had a number of friends just die.
I'm sorry to hear that, sure. I, not from these county health rankings, no. And so I guess I couldn't speak to that necessarily. What I could speak to is I understand that there, there can be sometimes our biases in our perception of data. And so what we always have to do is we have to look at the background rate. So for example, if, if, I don't know, I'm trying to think, if you went to the lake and you went water skiing and then the next day you had a heart attack, someone might say that heart attack was related to the activity that they did over the weekend. And that may or may not be true. But what we really have to, to look at is in our community, well, how, how common are heart attacks in general? They may have had that heart attack even without the activity or whatever they did before that. But, so it's really important to have that, that baseline and then to look, do we have some sort of flag? Are these happening at a higher rate than what we would expect based on our, our history of, of tracking this data? So, but that wouldn't be found necessarily in the rankings. Certainly, we only have up to 2021, but even then, they don't look for measures, there's not a, a measure for like unexplained deaths.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that does conclude today's Board of Health meeting. So hopefully there was a lot of information presented and there is a lot of data. I just want to say thank you to each of you for presenting on the topics that you did. Lots of community work going on. We look forward to continuing to grow the NOT program, hopefully in other high schools. And then of course, you'll hear lots more about the Community Health Needs Assessment as it's released later this year. We'll be back for a Board of Health meeting later this fall.
Great. Thank you. All right, next item, I believe on the agenda is public comment. Mr. McClure, you signed up?
Yeah, I'll do you a chat, thank you. Thank you very informally.
Hi, Henry McClure, good morning. Want to talk about the planning. And I was really, really encouraged the other day at the chamber forum where you thought that would be a good idea to consolidate. Did you know today, by state statute, we can form a third planning commission today? And that is to make up for the shortfall in the three mile radius. You could also, you could also by treaty and a new inter-local agreement, get rid of the three mile radius today. Just go meet with the city, make the deal. But, so let's say that the, the city and county couldn't get along and refused to give up the three mile, well, state statute today allows you to create a third planning commission. So you take three people from the city, take three people from the county, appoint them, and then they appoint a seventh person. And I think that's the long way home to get to combining the, the planning departments. And I would encourage that, working on this today, this is a great idea. Because today, the inequity is that you don't, if you're in the three mile radius, you don't have a, an elected official to go to and, and try to lobby and reason, you know, insanity. So I'll give you an example today. And what, what I'm getting at with that is that I hope that when we would put the, do that merger, that the- do that merger, that the county would be the lead department. You know, they, they would take over the planning department. So today, if you go to Thirty-seventh and Auburn Road, go west on Thirty-seventh and when it, it curves over to Hope Road, it's, it's kind of gravel for a little while. You go through a one-lane bridge. And I've got a golf course out there that I'm trying to redevelop, the old Great Life Golf and Fitness Golf Course. And we've had a lot of struggles with the planning department. And what we'd really like to do is privatize that golf course. So you could own your own golf course, would sell a lot and a certain amount of memberships that are, you know, friends and family could play golf on your private golf course. But here's the, here's the challenge. And so you round to Hope Road and on your way to Forty-Fifth, it's just mud. And they're requiring that between the city and the county back, back and forth, they're requiring us to pave our driveway. So our driveway would come off of, and I, I've looked at, at one of these lots myself personally. So my paved driveway would, would go to a dirt road. And that's just not fair. Why, why would, uh, but, but it's typical government. You know, you're gonna, we're gonna make you requi, we're gonna require you to do something we won't do ourselves. So I'm gonna be required to have a, a driveway and go onto a dirt road that's just mud. So over the lifetime, and they wouldn't even let us say, well, look, when you pave your road, we'll pave our driveways. That's just not fair. But we can start, let's just start on this planning idea together. It's a great idea. Let's start working on it now. Why wait till, why, why wait till an election? I know that Brett Blackburn feels the same, same way. You know, Brett actually was on the planning commission after it was broken up. I was on the previous planning commission, the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and a member of the MPO. And so Brett, Brett wanted to make some changes and they said, well, you want to make these changes, why don't you just run for city council? He did. He won, and then he changed it. But we need to really look at the way it's done today. It shouldn't take me, it shouldn't take me two years to get a, a permit for a pizza restaurant. There, it's broken today. We, we both agree that it ought to change, so let's work on it now. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other persons wanting to speak for public comment? Any administrative communications this morning? Commissioner Rippon, anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. And where do I? See if I can read this correctly as put forth by our county counselor. We are now going to move to the Law Enforcement Center located at three two zero South Kansas Avenue to begin our executive session. And we are, be on the sheriff's side of the building. We will review the real-time crime center. And the justification for the executive session is found in KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine, subsection twelve, which provides for the discussion of matters related to security measures. And if the discussion of such matters at an open meeting would jeopardize such security measures, that protects A, systems, facilities, or equipment used in the production, transmission, or distribution of the communication services; and C, a public body or agency, public building, facility, or information system of a public body or agency. Security measures include, but are not limited to, intelligence information, tactical plans, resource deployment, and vulnerability assessments. And this would be for a period not to exceed...
One hour.
One hour. So, and then we will now be, I'm making motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. We are in executive session.
The executive session will start at ten thirty. So we don't count our travel time.
Starting at ten thirty for one hour, no action anticipated.
We are back from executive session, no action was taken, we are adjourned.
(Beep)